Called order, City Council, work session for City of East Grand Forks for February 13th, 2024. With Secret, please call overall.
Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel, Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Ben Pakciewinski.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Karen Peterson.
Here.
Does determine our quorum. Number one, review of bid results for the 2023 city project. Number two, LeFay Park, park improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. So we opened bids for the LeFay Park project on January 30th. We did receive a total of two bids. One thing we did this year has, you know, opposed to what we had last year when we bid the project, we did break the project into three different proposals with proposal one being the street repair work along First Street. You know, that included some curb and gutter repairs, a mill and overlay. That proposal also included some ADA sidewalk work at the softball fields along with construction of a picnic shelter for by the ball fields. Proposal two essentially included, you know, the removal of the old bolt ramp, construction of a new bolt ramp along with that new parking lot area there. And then proposal three would have included everything, let's say, south of that proposed parking lot area over to about the Red Lake River, that kind of that area that we're looking at, kind of re-landscaping, kind of shaping it, seeding it. That was proposal three. So with that, I did give you kind of a breakdown of costs based on the low bid, which was from Zaverell's. So you can kind of see there again, proposal one, proposal one and two, and then proposal one, two, and three. In my meetings with Reed, Carla, you know, we identified all the different funding sources that we would have for that project. And, you know, we're, you know, our recommendation is probably to look at proposals one and two. And then the city may just do something with proposal three area kind of on their own, just, you know, felt like the cost, you know, just to basically do stop soiling, seeding, it seemed a little excessive. So that that was some work they could probably do on their own. And then, you know, there is some items too that the city is going to be purchasing such directly, such as the dock, some solar lighting. City did have to pay for some wetland credits in order to work within a couple of wetland areas there. So I guess with that, I can kind of open it up to any questions you may have. But again, in our review, you know, we, our recommendation would be to award proposal one and two, you know, to RJ Zaverell's and Sons in the amount of about $1,758,675. And we did kind of, there, we did kind of provide a breakdown of just the all, you know, all the different funding sources that would help pay for this project. So any questions?
Anybody have any questions from Mr. Emery? Is he? I didn't want, oh, I thought maybe.
So good. Thanks, Mr. President.
That's it then. Perfect. I'm ready. Move on to number two, review the bid results for the 2022 city project. Number three, quiet zones, street and stormwater improvements. Mr. Emery.
It would be sidewalk improvements, not stormwater improvements, but I think I had SW and Megan interpreted that as a stormwater, but it was, I meant sidewalk. So my bad.
Now you know, you can write it out.
Yeah. So, so yeah, we did open bids for the quiet zone project last Wednesday. We did receive two bids with op construction, you know, being the apparent low bidder at this time, a little over a million dollars. That was about 29% above what we were estimating for project cost. But we did, you know, review everything again, just, you know, with total project costs there with, you know, current engineering, future engineering, with construction staking, construction administration. We did include a 5% contingencies there. You know, we're at about 1.2 million. Some additional project costs that we, we would still have would be BNSF would put in, extend the at-grade crossing surfaces at Second and also Central Avenue to allow the sidewalks to cross in those two locations. And then one of the somewhat unknowns a little bit too is there is flagging operations that would be required during the project in the amount of about, we're estimating 35,000 is what we had kind of figured in the, the project documents. So we did do a preliminary breakdown of what, so right now, BNSF had offered the city 156,000 as an incentive to close Third Street. Reed and I actually had a teams meeting today at 3 o'clock with BNSF because what we, you know, kind of broke down our cost, you know, I think we were at roughly maybe what we thought was about 350 to 400,000 is what we foresee as potential cost to close Third Street. So BNSF is going to take that back, kind of reconsider it, see if they could come up with any additional funding to help pay for this project. Reed is going to be meeting with Sacred Heart on Friday, kind of to have some discussion with them about their appetite to help participate in this. And then there was some traffic signal revisions that need to be done to kind of coordination between the railroad signals and the traffic signals at Second and Highway Two. MINDOT is going to pay for half of that cost. So the bid came in at 116,000. So MINDOT would cover about 58,000, looking at about a couple hundred thousand in state aid construction funds. Right now, again, we had about 600,000 in city state aid maintenance funds and then 85 in storm sewer funds and then local street maintenance funds. So again, kind of have somewhat of a breakdown of how the project could be funding, but, you know, hopefully between BNSF, you know, maybe Sacred Heart, hopefully we can try to find some additional funding for that project. So this project, again, I don't have, I guess, a recommendation at this time. I think it's probably going to depend on a little bit how we're, you know, what BNSF comes back with, you know, how Reed's discussions go on Friday with Sacred Heart. So the bids are good for 60 days, so we do have a little bit of time. So, but wanted to get it in front of you. I don't know, Reed, if you, I did include, I guess what I kind of tried to maintain is what I called an eight-year capital improvement project, just to kind of give you an idea, you know, based on what we get it on an annual basis for state aid construction funds. And then just what we foresee, you know, the next seven, eight years, just for some potential projects where we'd be able to utilize those, those funds. I don't know if you looked at that. I think one of the big ones is over the next seven, eight years, I think we have about four different traffic signal replacement projects there that are going to eat up a lot of funds. But again, just trying to give you an idea that, you know, we do, we do monitor those funds and try to keep track of them. We know it's ever changing, but, and then Carla had put in kind of a, her state aid maintenance, you know, the funds that the city does get directly from state aid maintenance funds. Carla had a spreadsheet in there and I don't know if Carla or Reed, if you want to say anything about that.
Yeah, Mr. President, Steve, thank you. Just one more thing I think to point out on the state of construction funds that Steve just touched on the eight-year plan, the federal project that's planned in 2026, that's the kind of rehab to the Point Bridge. There hasn't been any design work done to that project yet. So we have kind of a placeholder in there of 1.8 million, but we really don't know what that is. And understanding that construction costs are continually rising, that'll be a shared project with Grand Forks, but that's a large unknown at this point, even as we look at that account. On the state aid maintenance account, just summarizing kind of where we're at to date, if we move forward with this project at the suggested amount to come out of this fund, the $600,000, that would put us at a deficit of 83,000 or so by the end of 2024. With what's planned in future years ahead, it would start to recoup itself over the next few years. But looking ahead to, I think the biggest thing to point out is looking ahead to 2027, 2028 timeframe is when we'd be due for our next citywide seal coats and street maintenance project. That has always been recommended on a seven to 10-year window. That 2027 would be 10 years out since we finished the last one. So some streets would be as far as 12 years old. And the last time we did that, we paid for that with city funds. We didn't need any, any bonding for it. We did it out of this account. So we likely at this point wouldn't be in that same position a few years from now to be able to do that again. So just a few of those things to have in mind in front of you. And then while I have it, the last thing I think to mention on the pricing that we have, the at-grade crossing surfaces, when we met with BNSF today, they did indicate that the final plan for those crossings, the agreement signed with MINDOT has not been signed yet. There may be still 30 to 60 days away from signing that agreement and ordering materials. Materials are probably six months out from date of order. So that doesn't mean that we could not move forward with our project construction this year, but the actual signal install, to be able to have the quiet zone go active would likely at this point not happen until 2025.
So I guess with that, I'll kind of open up if there's any questions on that. Again, I don't think we'll be ready to probably bring this back to the council meeting next week for, you know, any formal decision. There's still answers on funding we got to get before I think we can make a formal recommendation. But I guess any questions where we're currently at?
So with, let's say we, the quiet zone, I'm looking at this 513, 440, right? Is that what we have in there? The quiet zone line item on 2024 coming out of here? Am I reading this correctly then?
Yeah, you're reading that correctly.
So let's say we didn't do that, we'd still be looking at 1.2 million dollars short if they're looking down to 27, 28.
And the citywide street project at this forecast, yeah, correct.
And if we wait to do this, it's going to get more expensive every year.
Yeah, in all likelihood.
I would hope that maybe we get some money from BNSF more. But I don't, I don't see how we, if we want to go through this and do it, if we don't do it now, it's not going to get done because it's going to keep getting more expensive.
I was going down the same mental train track in my head. You know, the first question, will the cost go down? I don't see them going down. Will we find another source of funds? You know, is there some tree out there we haven't shook to try to find some more funds for this? I don't think so. And so I think you round up the funds that you have access to now and you find a way to do it because if it's a priority, I think it comes all the way back to that question. Is a quiet zone in the heart of our city right there a priority? Seems like it is. So. And one thing just keep in mind too, right now, MINDOT is paying for all the railroad signal system upgrades at Second. MINDOT is paying 100% of that. So, you know, that's something that may not be in there in the future too. So. So I'm, I'm thinking as you were there also.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Reed, just so I'm clear, if there is additional funding by BNSF or local property owners, that'll reduce our spend out of the state aid maintenance fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
So if we move this forward till the next meeting to vote on it, is that what, if we want to go forward, is that what you guys want to likely want to do? Or do you guys, are we going to hold back till you get done talking to Sacred Heart and getting answers back from BNSF?
Yeah, I would, I would ask that you give us a few weeks to get answers back from BNSF and have a conversation with Sacred Heart. And by the hopefully first meeting in March, we'd be able to bring it forward to the council.
So if we awarded it, when would, when would it start?
We would, you know, we would look at probably starting probably in that June timeframe. Again, the way I had it set up is that all work had to be completed by, I think August 15th is what I had.
School.
Because I want to have all three of those crossings taking care of what school is out. So, and BNSF, like, like Reed said too, BNSF would put in the at-grade crossing surfaces. They would put those in this construction season. It's just the signals themselves that may not get done till 2025 construction. So with that, we wouldn't be able to activate or the quiet zone until those new traffic signals or establish the quiet zone until those most signals have been installed. So.
Given the fact it took, what, 10 months to get the other poles, I can't imagine, you know?
Right.
Anybody else have anything? Just a little wait to hear back from you and bring it back to another work session then. Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to move number six up. Apologize, sorry, chief, move number six up. Update on Grand Rides Bike Share and Consider Sponsorship Request, Mr. King.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council. The Downtown Development Association has requested the city to renew its sponsorship for the Grand Rides Bike Share. The request amount was $10,000. This aligns with the sponsorship request for the last two years. DDA has shared in 2023 that Grand Rides saw their best season yet. They increased ridership by 12% in East Grand Forks. There was 960 rides that either started or ended in EGF. The highest user areas in East Grand Forks were Cabela's area, or downtown, I should say, the food bank, Northland Campus, and Hugo's. The bike share is being used for both recreational and daily transportation. The DDA does continue to continue to grow the program in 2024 with additional adult tricycles and possible electric bikes. The last couple of years, we used the All True partnership funds to pay for this. I think that would be a good use of those dollars if that was something we wanted to go forward with this year. There is adequate funds in that account right now to cover this sponsorship. And with that, I'll open up for any questions.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. How much is in the All True account?
Around roughly between 100, around 107,000.
Okay. And we get funds from them? How often or do they?
Once a year.
Do they give those funds anymore?
Yep, we get a check once a year for $45,000 for projects like this. We have two years left on that contract, the cornerstone partnership contract with All True. So we'll have two more checks coming.
Cool. Sounds good. That's the only question I had.
Anybody else have any questions? Anything? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Bushy, sorry about that. Consider the purchase of early warning sirens.
Thank you, Council President. Evening, council. Yeah, I'd like to talk to you about our early warning siren system. We've got four of them located throughout the city. They do a pretty good job of coverage with the exception of the downtown campground area. This system is 23 years old. Its life expectancy is 20 to 30 years. So I'm requesting to replace the four existing and then relocate one of the existing to Station One to fill that void downtown in the campground. Cost of this project is $107,000 estimated at, and we have funding available to cover this through that, the public safety funds. My recommendation is that you would approve that plan of replacing and relocating and then award this contract to federal warning systems for the equipment and the installation.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? I see none, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to number four, Consider Mortar Grader Transmission Replacement, Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Volvo motor grader experienced some issues with the transmission. The transmission shot. We got a couple of different estimates to replace the transmission. NUS came in a little bit higher than Ascendum, but the benefits of going with NUS are that they are recommending that we replace all hoses and a pump that may have fragments of metal in there. Be the recommendations of our city mechanics to go with, with NUS because of this. They also have a dedicated transmission person. We do have the funds to cover the repair in our snow and ice and equipment budgets. And I recommend that we go with NUS for the transmission replacement.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stordahl? I see none, sir. Dale, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Jason, I, I thought, was you at one time looking at a reman transmission for this thing?
This is a, this is a rebuilt that they're putting into it. They send the.
Is it rebuilt or are they rebuilding it?
They, it's a rebuilt with new parts.
Okay, okay. Perfect. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, update on Civic Center events. Mr. King.
Thank you again, Council President and City Council. If you remember back in November, the Forks Builders Association had approached us when wanting to rent the Civic Center for their home design and garden show. Unfortunately, the executive officer for their association has, is no longer with them and they're trying to pick up all the pieces and they have decided that they're not, they're going to postpone the home and garden show for 2024. They still would like us to, they're, sorry that was so sudden and that it, the contract didn't get signed, but they, they are planning to host it here in 2025. The second update I have is Layton Broadcasting has expressed interest in renting the Civic Center for a concert on April 27th of 2024. This kind of came to light at the beginning of last week. So there's not a whole lot of the fine details worked out. Been in talks with Layton Broadcasting, have a couple of meetings with them this week. They have a national touring artist who's excited to host a concert here. That would kind of piggyback off the State of the Mayor or State of the City address would be that Thursday before. So there could be some cost savings for the city for the stage setup to both be using live wire. So Layton Broadcasting has the artist penciled in and they'd like to start advertising as soon as Thursday, start selling tickets. Still have all the similar issues with removing, they have requested that we remove the glass. So that's something that we're working through. Have already made contact with Ingolstadt on renting the equipment to do that. The recommended price to rent the Civic Center for a concert like that kind of aligns with what we were looking at last year, the last two years actually for, as these events have been spoken about, but 4,500 seemed like a good, a good number to come up with to, to do all the labor and everything that comes along with that. So yeah, that's, that's kind of the updates that we have.
So I mean, are you bringing this forth next week then for an up on the letting them rent it for the concert?
I just wanted to get an update. I don't, I don't know if I'll have it ready for next week yet, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of what was going on prior to bringing it forward. Like I said, there's still a lot of fine details to work out. So I, I hope we can have it ready by that time, but I can't be sure.
I guess, do we want to bring it forward just to approve it and as long as you get all, everything organized, I guess, signed and all that? So we don't have to bring it back? So there's no delay on our end?
Sure, yep, we can do that.
I mean, that'd be better for us?
Absolutely. They can have it ready for, have it ready for next week.
Have everything done with it next week?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. Just maybe to add to that, a few things we may not have organized. We have a meeting scheduled with them Thursday morning to talk through some of the details, but we'll be able to bring a framework of an agreement forward with the exception of, I don't know that we'll have all the details on what their seating plan is, exactly how many tickets they plan to sell. And those, we'll need answers to those questions to understand what kind of security we're going to ask them to have and understand what the liquor sales may look like, beer, beer or liquor sales. But the framework of the agreement and the rental fee, there's no reason we can't be prepared to have that on the agenda for Tuesday. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I would be a little frustrated if they advertised before we voted on it. It just seems like the cart's in front of the horse. That, that's just, just my opinion. I would think we could work in good faith, properly get the vote in place and then they could advertise. I would assume that's the best practice for both parties.
Absolutely.
But I think this could be a really fun opportunity. You know, it'll be complicated moving the glass, but I'm excited to see us give this a shot and see if like the Civic Center could be used for this type of fun event. And so I, I think it'll be cool to dive into it. I'm sure there'll be lessons learned afterwards and we'll tweak it, the model. But I think it's great to try to bring in especially some touring acts. That's, that's a great opportunity.
So the plan, at least for the glass, will be is we've kind of taken it to be scheduled the first weekend in April to pull the glass out. And then we'll leave it out for the remainder of the summer. So graduation, we will leave it out for graduation. It'll be gone for the State of the City. And then if, if it works out good and there's other opportunities to lease out the building throughout the summer without the glass for any type of events, we'll leave it out with the plan of reinstalling it in, in the fall.
Thank you.
Just have one other question regarding to the cost of renting this. Is the equipment or the rental of the equipment to take out the glass incorporated into that? Or can you increase it slightly because there is additional cost for the requested?
It's included in that cost right now. And the rent, the only equipment we'll have to rent is for the forklift.
Yeah.
The rest will be city, city labor and city equipment.
Mr. President?
Deal.
Yeah, I'm with Ms. Pearson there on that, on that labor cost. That doesn't, that 4,500, just for everything that we're going to be doing, doesn't sound like it would even cover the overtime and our labor and everything else involved in that. Is, you got all that figured in there correctly?
So I don't have any overtime figured into it. It'll all be done on straight time. But, you know, being that this is the first time that we've removed the glass like that, don't have a great idea of, of how long it's going to take or how, how much it's going to cost. But it's, it's scheduled right now for at least one employee for five days worth of work. There's also some room in there in case we break some glass or there, we can, we have the ability to replace some of the glass if something breaks. I feel that 4,500 is a pretty fair number, at least to start with.
Did we, we talked about that, breaking that glass one time. Did, and we talked about maybe having them liable to, to replace that glass if it broke. So we didn't have to. Are we still looking at something like that? Or are we just going to go with the idea that the city will just be stuck with it?
So I think we would put in, we would start with the 4,500 with the contingency that if a certain amount of glass is damaged, then Layton would have to pay those costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Reed?
Yeah, thank you. Just to add, the conversation the last time we had this was we agreed on two sheets of glass as kind of a contingency fee to it. It would still be only charged if we broke, but there was concern from the concert organizer's side that if there's no limit to how many pieces of glass break, that this is just a bad venture for everybody all the way around. At least this kind of keeps everybody honest at a couple sheets. So that was kind of the basis for that. I think on the question of the rental fee, that may be something just for, for food for thought for all council members. Both of these rentals are based on basically a $500 a day. $500 a day rent of the building for a dry floor event, and then we build that price up based on what kind of additional work it requires of our staff. So if there's consideration that the rental fee is low, we should look at our, our fee schedule for what we charge to rent the facility for dry floor events on a daily rate.
Anybody else have anything? I see none, sir. Appreciate it. Move on to number seven, information on upcoming presidential primary election, Ms. Nelson.
Okay. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, it'll be, and the notice will be in the paper starting this week, we do have the presidential primary election coming up on Tuesday, March 5th. All polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on that day. Absentee voting is currently available here at City Hall Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. However, we will be closed on February 19th, so it will not be available that day, but we will have additional hours on Saturday, March 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So any residents of the city that wanna come and vote absentee, you have that ability. And I also wanna give a reminder that it is this election that all voters will have to say which ballot that they would like. For whatever reason the state set it up, there are three ballots for this election, one for each official party recognized by the state. So just reminder to voters that when you come in, you have to let, it's on the absentee application that you mark, or you'll have to let the, let the judges know which ballot you want when you come in to vote. Anybody with questions on the upcoming election, feel free to give me a call in the administration office, 218-773-2483. And also, just for this election, at the school, we have words three, four, and five. Last time we had everybody enter door two, but just for the presidential primary, we're gonna have everybody enter door one. We're gonna be voting in the room, room 195, where they hold the school board meetings. After looking at, they're gonna have the potato feed the night before of the election, and just with all the bodies and, and everybody that's gonna be in and out of the school that day, that room is a little bit more secure than just putting everything in the gym and having the gym set up. So just for this presidential primary, please enter door one and enter room 195, we'll have people there and signs and everything, so, but for the August and November elections, we'll move back to door number two and everything will be in the gym. That's all I have, unless somebody has a question for me.
Anybody have any questions? I see none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Larson?
Second.
Second by Vetterall, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion is carried, meeting is adjourned.